Pledge, please. Walter, could you lead us in the pledge now?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We could have a moment of silence for the men and women in the armed forces. And also, if we could have a special memory for Mr. Robert Ceruto. And also, I was just notified that we may have a possible drowning in Gaywoodsville. So if we could keep those people in our groups. Thank you. Thank you very much.
When did you hear about that? Just now?
Yeah. Walter?
Yes, sir. Michael Ostroff, please.
Good evening. My name is Michael Ostroff and I live at 175 Candlewood Mountain Road in New Milford. Candlewood Solar, Amoresco, and Commercial Services Realty came before the town council and repeatedly said they want to be our friends. Don't be deceived, they are not our friends. Make no mistake about this, it is all about money and profits. This is an attempt to exploit New Milford's natural resources by an out-of-state company. They are planning to cut down 12,000 trees of our core forest at a time when climate change scientists have clearly stated that we need to plant billions of new trees to offset the accumulation of greenhouse gases that are causing our planet to heat up irreversibly if we don't make sensible changes. Cutting down trees to save the environment is not sensible. This is not about environmentalism, obviously. It's about profits, pure and simple. I don't believe the residents of New Milford, Sherman, Brookfield, and Bridgewater have any idea of the damage this project proposes to inflict upon us. We are talking about 53 football fields full of industrial blight. For a project of this magnitude, the lazy, incomplete, and dangerously incompetent plans submitted regarding stormwater management and the resulting erosion it could cause, the lack of safety protocols, a non-existent decommissioning plan, and insufficient funding for foreseen as well as unforeseen consequences are not only recklessly irresponsible, but beyond comprehension. We should all be very afraid of this project. Don't be fooled by their claims that this is wonderful for the town, it is not. The overwhelming benefit is for these companies' bottom lines. Make no mistake, Candlewood Solar, Amoresco, and Commercial Services Realty don't care about New Milford, they are not our friends. This horrendous industrial park smack in the middle of our town will be seen and felt for miles around and decades to come. And the benefits will fall to these companies' corporate coffers at our expense. This must be stopped. This is the time for common sense. I want to thank Mayor Pete Bass and the town council for recognizing the dangers inherent in this project and making the effort and taking the time to protect our town. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Diane, 25 Candlewood Shore, please.
Thank you, Diane Claye. Good evening. I'm also here about the Amoresco project. I read that they will post bonds to protect the town and its taxpayers from damage and erosion caused by their construction, and I'm concerned that the amount will not be sufficient. $100,000 for landscaping needed to address adverse visual impacts seems way too little for a project whose size equals more than 50 football fields. $100,000 for sedimentation and erosion control bond to cover costs over a 20-year period on an extreme steep slope seems beyond inadequate. And $125,000 to fix the 2.5 miles of Candlewood Mountain Road seems woefully inadequate when you consider that just a few months ago, New Milford approved a $10 million bond to fix approximately 28 miles of roads. That works out to $350,000 per mile. I realize that the cost that I just mentioned includes things like culverts and storm sewers and reclamation of land. So even taking half of that amount of the per-mile estimate times 2.5 miles of road, and we are left with a $300,000 shortfall to replace just that one road. Just that one road. In addition, I'm concerned with safety issues. Consider the impact of 40 logging trucks lumbering on our roadways six days a week for a full year. These trucks will have to negotiate tough intersections at Route 37 and Route 7 240 times per week. This will adversely impact not only the 300 residents who live, I've estimated that, on Candlewood Mountain Road, but everyone, including school buses and commuters who use Route 7 and Route 37 every day, several times a day, for a full year. Thank you again for all that you do and for your continued work to ensure that this very poorly placed project, will, if ever be approved, be the best that it can be for the town. Thank you.
Thank you, Diane. James Umbacher, please.
Good evening. My name is James J. Umbacher, 124 Candlewood Mountain Road. And I'm here also to speak about Candlewood Solar, Amoresco, or a couple of the other names they're going under nowadays, or they have used. I don't want to go through all the financial and potential damage to the Canyon, Candlewood Mountain landscape, but I do want to point out to the town council that this is an LLC that Amoresco has formed to conduct this wine business. It's a limited liability company. And that means exactly what it says is, "Amoresco has no corporate liability for this project on the top of Candlewood Mountain." They are the sole member and manager of Candlewood Solar. But if you read, and I printed out some of the Connecticut State statutes, 34-251A and B, "The failure of a limited liability company to observe formalities relating to the exercise of its power or management of its activities and affairs is not a ground for imposing liability on a member or manager of the company for a debt, obligation, or other liability of the company." In a nutshell, what that means is, they have formed this LLC and they have pigeonholed the liability to this one entity. And the other people spoke to, you know, the amount of bonding they put up. That's their exposure. For, just to make you aware, I'm not an attorney, I'm not giving legal advice, but I am a shareholder of Amoresco. I bought stock when this all came up so I could have some of the filings, SEC filings that Amoresco does. And I go through and occasionally look at some of their SEC filings. A while ago, about a year, a year and a half ago, I noticed that they do not file Form 8Ks for their incorporation or formation of an LLC. And I could go through some of the criteria for filing an SEC 8K, but I've got a list of them, which I can leave. Completion or acquisition or disposition of assets, this is the big one. Creation of a direct financial obligation or obligation under an off-balance-sheet arrangement of a registry. I am shocked that they are not filing 8Ks for this project. And then upon a little bit of investigation, pretty much all of the projects they do are through LLCs. So Amoresco as a corporation has kind of avoided direct liability for this. One of the last points I'd like to bring up is Section 34-243H, which is the LLC section of the Connecticut General Statutes. I'll read it. "No limited liability formed under the provisions of Sections 34-243 to 34-283D inclusive shall have the power to transact in this state the business of a telegraph company, gas, electric, distribution, or water company, or cemetery corporation, or of any company except a telephone company requiring the right to take and condemn and to occupy the public highways of this state." I looked at the map that Amoresco or Candlewood Solar, they, on their corporate map on their website, again, I printed it out, they are going to take this to the station on Route 7. They're going to be going over a Connecticut State Highway. And to me, not an attorney, seems to be in violation of this Connecticut statute even to go this far. And I would suggest, I mean, I think there's an attorney here, might want to take a look at this section of the Limited Liability Connecticut General Statutes to really kind of fine-tune Occupy the Public Highways of the State. Does it mean a truck? Does it mean lines over? Does it mean going to the station? So I think there's kind of a couple of gray areas.
Sure, you have four minutes, sure, you have one left.
That's it? I'm done.
Jay, could you give it to Randy? Thank you, Jay. Carl Dunn, please.
Good evening. My name is Carl Dunn, 195 Candlewood Mountain Road. And I've been before you a number of times on the same issue of a solar project. I've watched it all the way through and it has been clearly a moving target. Thank God, you've become much more scrutinizing on it and you can begin to see how bad it is. Not only is it bad, there's almost an arrogance to the town's position. I was totally amazed that when the town brought up the issue of reviewing the development and management plan, they were ruled out of order by the siding council as not having standing to do that. I mean, that's just an arrogance. All the talk that they had during the course of their various presentations about wanting to work with everybody, they never actively dealt with the wetlands commission, they never actively dealt with the zoning commission, which is what anybody that's providing any kind of a land use issue would normally do. Now, I'll grant you, maybe they can bypass us, but that is not taking into consideration our positions and what we have in mind. This, as you know, has been a totally moving target. My position is that it was incomplete to begin with because they've misdirected some of the wetland issues. Even when they had to change their proposal, they still didn't follow the proper standards for distances from wetlands and rural pools. They totally ignored any issue of buffers until now they're beginning to backtrack a little bit when faced with DEP. And now they're talking about buffers, but they're not talking about buffers like we normally would talk about buffers. Their attitude about buffers was, if you're the abutting owner, you can provide the buffer for us. So there's been kind of an arrogance and attitude. And what's really worse is that the net product that you're going to have is going to be something that we're going to have to live with for years. You can go back to waste management, the issues that we had with respect to the height of the landfill. You've got to remember that this proposal is proposed for the crown of a mountain, which means that the solar panels that they're placing, maybe they're only 10 feet tall, or 11 feet, or whatever they are, they're going to follow the temper of the land. So if one doesn't catch you with a reflection, I can assure you, other ones will. I have continually pointed out how it's adverse to the traffic pattern of the airport. That gets blown off by that virtue of the fact that they say, "Oh, the standards for airports are straight-in approaches." Well, that's not what happens here in New Milford. I'm so pleased that you've taken a scrutinizing view of it, that you've hired consultants. And I actually believe that we will be successful. But it's important not to drop the ball. It's really important to follow through. And so I encourage you to continue your diligence, to be on top of it. It's really a shame because this project is not doing anything for New Milford. We get no credit for the production of electricity. It goes to Massachusetts. Beyond that, even Massachusetts wouldn't tolerate a project this big. Their maximum size is 10 megawatts, and this is 20. This is a huge project. And I'll tell you, Amoresco, Candlewood Solar, whatever you want to call them, they have no experience doing this size project. If you look at their information they submit, they're typically adding a 3-megawatt, 4-megawatt, nothing of this size and dimension. And it shows up when it starts getting scrutinized. So I just think it's really important to do this, to follow it. It's kind of a joke that everybody else has to pay their taxes, but these guys come in and have the audacity to expect us to fund the thing. They've reversed the collection on taxes from something that is front-end loaded, which is typically what would happen with personal property, to something that maybe you'll get the money in 15 or 20 years. It's totally unfair. Let's see. I think all the other things have been brought up by many other speakers. And I believe that we will prevail. And I thank you for all your efforts.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Mr. Mayor, that's Dan Wester.
Thank you, Walter. Next, mayor's comments. First, I'd like to thank the chief, who's right here this evening. Thank you, chief, the men and women of the New Milford Police Department, the Brookfield Police Department, State Representative Ville Buckby, Superintendent Carrie Parker, the New Milford Board of Education, as we did actor shooter training today at Scotticoke Middle School. Chief, I'd like to thank you for being proactive, you and your men. This is something that's a light topic, but we need to protect our citizenry, especially our youth. And we're going to do every effort, everything we can to make sure that our kids are safe, our teachers, and our staff are protected in our schools. So, chief, thank you. There'll be more to follow on that as we continue with our training. Next, I'd like to thank the New Milford Public Schools for their Passport Summer Program, which was their mathematics. We've seen lots and lots of kids at the mayor's office and around town, so I can't thank the board of ed and the teachers and the staff for keeping math in the minds of our kids. So I think that's great. I'd like to thank them for that. We're continuing on our roadwork. Just to fill you in, work is going on, continuing on Erickson Road. They're putting the binder course down today, they started doing that. Second Hill Drainage is being installed. Silk fence and prep work will be starting on Pickett District. Fort Ice, we're waiting for Aquarian to complete their infrastructure improvements, and then we'll start work on there. And then it's on to Miss Tillan Overlook, which has had some of the drainage and silt fences starting there. I'll update the council on the chip-sealed and crack-sealed roads at our next town council meeting. So we're continuing our investment in improving our roads and infrastructure. So I'd like to thank our Public Works team and our design engineers for moving those forward. Also, with infrastructure, work continues on Serenoble. Matter of fact, one of the things, I was able to actually go up on that roof and progress report was given to me. They brought in a second full crew. Earlier this week, the second crew was installing the cap sheet. In the past three days, both crews are replacing and installing base ply. The auditorium roof was a surprise, it had gypsyian deck and not metal. So they're going to put different fasteners on there. Also, they're continuing and they may do some weekend work, depending on weather. So I'd like to thank Garland, who's actually doing the work there. As far as the New Milford High School roof, it's with our building committee. And we're going through the process and procedures there. And I will update the council at the next meeting on that. I'd like to thank the Commission of the Arts on their art walk this weekend. It was great, saw a lot of people enjoying the wonderful artists that we have in town and outside of town. And I thought it was great to bring additional business to the downtown. So thank you to the New Milford Arts Commission. I'd also like to congratulate our new police officers, who were sworn in on the 7th. It was Mark Bove. And chief, I'm probably going to mispronounce the gentleman's second officer, Rich Dossey X, maybe?
Dakota.
Dakota, okay. And I'd like to thank them, they're going to be going to the academy. And we wish them the best of luck and Godspeed, and can't wait to have them on the team. I'd like to thank Northville Fire and Water Witch. Park and Rec Summer Camp ended last week and they had their water day. So they came out and used their hose to help the kids out for a memorable last day. So we'd like to thank them for that. Also, a brief update on Lindemming. Our security protocols have been very successful. I've heard from a lot of residents that they're excited at the fact they can enjoy the park. Also, with Carlson's Grove and Clatter Valley, I've worked with the New Milford Police Department, Eversource, First Light when it comes to the Gaylordsville stopoff, all in efforts to keep these areas safe for Clatter Valley and for also Carlson's Grove. We've instituted with the help of the Park and Rec additional cameras. We've also had the police come in, and I'd like to thank the chief for additional patrols. If you are a citizen of New Milford and show proper ID, you are not to be charged. If you're an out-of-town resident, you go to the Park and Rec as you would for Addis Park and for Lindemming, and pay for your permit. We've added additional garbage disposals on Carlson's Grove, and we will continue to monitor those for the safety of all of our residents and non-residents that enjoy the parks. I'd also like to congratulate Pastor Polanco and the church elders. I went to their opening for their Orion Spanish Church in New Milford. We congratulate them and welcome to our wonderful town. I'd like to briefly talk a little bit about our bond package. It was successfully announced and done. We also refinanced some previous bonds that are going to give us a total of $279,000 in savings as part of the refinance. In talking with our investment community, our bonds were well-received. As a matter of fact, our interest rates were below some of our AAA partners in other towns. So it was a very successful service. Our debt service will remain relatively flat, so we're using our cash flow strategies to do our infrastructure while maximizing our ability to do this work. Next, also, I'd like to thank Carolyn Haglin, Jasmine Dunston for a wonderful summer luau for our seniors. We had well over 100 and some 50 seniors there. And it was great to see that and Jasmine doing the Hawaiian luau and party and dances, and they'd made their own costumes, and it was wonderful. Also, working with the Board of Education, we met with Superintendent Parker. We met with her team as well as ours as we're continuing to look at capital items that we can work on together to use economies of scale, to reduce costs. And also, we're working on getting Celtic Energy to be supported by the Board of Education side to look at possibilities of using energy cost savings for capital requirements. And I'll be filling in the council, as we have already approved Celtic Energy, I'll be filling that in to the council at our next meeting as well. So I'd like to move on to the next.
I'd like to make a motion to add some items to the agenda, mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to add Item 5B under appointments and reappointments to add the Commission on the Arts, a couple of appointments there. And also, Item 4E, which is in regard to a donation made to the police department, and 4F regarding a donation made to the Parks and Rec of a kayak.
Do I have a second?
Sure.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
No.
opposed? Thank you. Thank you.
All right. So Item 4, I won't use it as a consent agenda since we have these additions. 4A, approval of the prior minutes, move to approve?
Second.
Any discussion on the prior minutes? All those in favor?
No.
opposed? Thank you.
Move to accept a donation of $1,000 from Gary Goldring to be used for the New Milford Police Department's 50th Anniversary Celebration on September 8th. That donation will be put in the revenue account of 104010048400 for further appropriation into account 1040100-56001, which is materials and supplies.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
No.
opposed? Thank you.
Move to accept a donation of $1,000 from Thomas Pillar for the New Milford Police Department's 50th Anniversary Celebration to be held on September 8th. The account numbers for both, further appropriation through materials and supplies are the same. I don't think you need me to read those.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Thank you.
Item 5D, approve, motion to accept the donation of $500 from Iron Law of New Milford to be used for the New Milford Police Department's 50th Anniversary Celebration. And that money would also be put in those same two accounts.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Thank you.
And our last one is, move to accept a very generous donation of food from Omaha Beef valued at approximately $2,000 that will be specifically applied to the New Milford Police Department's 50th Anniversary Celebration.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Thank you.
Item 5A.
What about 4F? 4S?
Pardon? Yes, I did, that was the first thing we did.
Okay. 4F?
4F.
No, I'm sorry, I was answering Councilman Skelly's question. 4F?
That's the...
Kayak.
Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot the kayak. Oh my goodness, all that money. Move to accept Item 4F, which is a donation to the Parks and Rec Commission from Prodigy Perception Kayak, valued $250 kayak to be used at Lindemming, and that is a gift from Mr. and Mrs. William Bennett.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Thank you. And we'll make sure we get letters out to all of these donors and thanking them for their efforts.
Should be a great party. Item 5A, move to approve the following appointment. Zoning Board of Appeals, the appointment of Mark Toleska, filling an alternate vacancy. Approve the, on the town council, the appointment of Chris Cosgrove, replacing Paul Samansky. And on Parks and Recreation, the appointment of Paul Samansky, filling a vacancy. All of these appointments will run from August 12, 2019 through November 30, 2019.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Thank you.
And then the add-on, this would be 5B, move to accept the following appointments to the Commission of the Arts. It would be the appointment of Stephen Tannenbaum, replacing Mr. Porizka, and the appointment of Bob Coppola, replacing Linda Breen. Their terms to be August 12, 2019, through January 31 of 2020.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Thank you.
Item 6? Oops, got more?
Since Mr. Cosgrove has been appointed to town council, Randy, could you swear Mr. Cosgrove in so he can take his seats?
Aye. I'm guessing Paul is on.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Okay, Item 6, move to approve action on the memo of understanding between the Town of New Milford and the New Milford WPCA.
Second.
Okay. Thank you, Walter. Basically, this memorandum of understanding is something that's been needed for probably this past decade. And basically, what this memorandum of understanding says is something the town has been doing since the inception of the bond for the water treatment plant. For those that aren't familiar with the water treatment plant, kind of its history, back in August of 2009, there's a bipartisan commission that was made up first of Chairman John Heaton, and then Mr. Heaton, then Frank Bedetti became chairman. There was a need by the state for the Town of New Milford to upgrade its sewer plant because it was bringing in additional nitrogen and different affluents that were going into the Housatonic River that was causing, if we didn't fix it, massive fines. So that particular sewer commission worked with the state to come up with a sewer expansion plan, which they did. In the sewer expansion plan, the thought process was that the sewer footprint itself would pay for the bonds. up the difference and has been since day one. There's a lot of misconjecture out there, and I just want the public to understand fully that we've always picked it up. The sewer commission has tried in different ways to help mitigate the costs. Some of them is increasing their fees, so much so that sometimes it hurts the ability to bring business into town. So another thought was use, because we're only at 30% capacity of the plant, use the ability to have septic haulers come into the town and dump their septic and create a revenue stream. We did that starting back in fiscal year 2016, actually 2015, maybe a little less. But I wanted to give the town council and the public kind of the thought process and where we are, because numbers don't lie. So basically, our bond payments, our total debt per year, run anywhere from in the year, fiscal year 2016, down to the year approximately 2020, is about $1.91,908,554.42 in the year fiscal '16. Fiscal year '20, $1,855,907. Now, for the WPCA, their payments, when we had the septic in the year 2016, they paid $1 million. That means the town covered $908,584.42. In the year '17, we actually had $1,200,000. So the town obligation was at $563,132. We then, at fiscal year '18, what were, when we began to lower our septic, it was reduced to $886,403, which the town then became obligated for $1,25,535.15. Last year, septic was heavily reduced because we had a New York hauler that put in commercial waste that hardened our plant, so at that particular time, the sewer commission decided to lower the ability for septic. That reduced the revenue to $593,796, which then the town is obligated at $1,301,195. This year, for '20, we're expected, the sewer commission is expected to give the town $540,000, which would leave the town $1,315,907, as we have to subsidize. So there's a choice that we all have to make, and the choice is, do you continue to hit the sewer district for continued fees that cannot absolutely pay for the plant? Can't happen. Does the town continue to subsidize its plant as per the bonds, which it has to do? So in that case, how do we look at raising additional funds to help pay for the cost of this? So one of the things we've been doing is working with our economic development team and the sewer team. Karen Pollard is here today, tonight as well, and looking at different ways that we can work with our sewer partners and our town council as we're bringing in new business and new economic vitality to help defray the cost. So with this MOU, what we're basically telling our constituency, and we're telling our auditors, and telling our sewer commission and our town council, that we all understand something that we've been doing for the last decade is that what they cannot pay on their sewer debt, the town subsidizes, and that's how it's been since we've done it. So this just puts it in writing, so we all know where we are, and we're going to continue to work together to help mitigate these costs, but this is how it is, and we're going to be continuing to roll out some infrastructure improvements and incentive plans. I'm working with Karen on those. We'll be bringing those to the council for your review as we continue to bring economic development to town. Katie?
Due to the problems we had with the hauler bringing in the wrong kind of waste, which caused problems with the plant, how can we continue to review bringing waste so that we can make money from that, but make sure that there's enough oversight that that will never happen and actually that it will be monitored closely for all purposes?
So what the sewer commission did in tandem with their sewer, their plant supervisor is they've lowered the amount of septic they believe they can top out at.
Okay.
They've lowered that dramatically because they did not want to hurt the plant at all or give the plant any kind of ability to do that, so they put a max out. They've also limited the area of where people can dump septic in. I believe it's as far as probably Danbury to Kent, so there is no, I believe, New York hauler that's coming in out of state, so they've limited that. So the goal also is to look at adding new hookup fees, hookups to the sewer. The good news is, right about, right now, I believe we have about 23 new projects that are in town. Some of them are adaptive reuse, some are new buildings, so as they come on, that connection fee will help mitigate some of the problems, but those are one-time
Right.
...connection fees. So we're looking at strategies to bring in this new business that'll help attract people onto the sewer district itself, which will also help mitigate some of our costs.
What about, will there be any impact on the pumps? I know we had a discussion last year, whatever, about the, one of the stations, the pumps. I mean, they need to be used in order to be efficient, and there was talk of replacing some. Is that still...
Yes. So the good news is, the sewer district is able to pay for everything else but the plant expansion. So we do have, like, the West Side Pump Station.
That's it.
The West Side Pump Station is the major pump station that brings the septic, brings the sewer across and underneath the river. That one is about a $1.1 or $1.2 million project. They have the money for that.
Great.
So they've been saving that through their capital reserve to do that, but once that is done, the capital reserve has dwindled pretty substantially, so...
But that's the major.
That's the major one. Correct.
Great, thank you.
And the whole goal is, obviously, this plant at 30% capacity. We need to get the capacity up to help the plant run better, bring some more revenue in, and also that helps with our nitrogen credits as well. Chris?
With the septic limit being lowered, are we confident that our local haulers are able to use the plant?
Yes. So they have two areas where you could be able to dump the septic. They have two, so they're capable of doing that, and they run a good system over there. You have to actually get licensed by the town itself to dump there, so they're pretty versed in doing that.
Both the Milford haulers have priority?
I think they wait in line like the other ones.
Really? Yeah.
I almost had a lay-in already, comment, but I'm not going to.
Okay, Walter.
Any other discussion?
So this is a good first step so that everybody knows who's on
Absolutely.
...page one.
Right.
So that we remove this.
Correct. Then also, the council is aware, as I'll be bringing this to the Board of Finance, too, just as an update. I mean, they don't have the legislative function, but just so as we're moving forward and planning these processes, especially for capital investment, as we've talked about for the last six to eight months, it's a very, the capital investment's a very big lift, we all kind of know where we're going. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Item number seven, under Parks and Rec, move to approve a request from Parks and Recreation to close the southbound Main Street to through traffic from the top of the Green, South to Bridge Street, Bank Street, and the two crossovers at Church and Bank and at Boardman Terrace on Thursday, October 31, 2019, between the hours of 5:15 and 7:30, to hold the annual Halloween trunk or treat.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Item number eight, move to approve a request from Mike Nahom and the Taste of New Milford to close the Southern Crossover at Main Street on Wednesday, September 4, 2019, from 10:00 a.m. to, oh, September 4 from 10:00 a.m. to September 5, 2019, 10:00 a.m., so full 24 hours for the Taste of New Milford to go on. And there's a note here, there's, this is pending approval from the Traffic Authority. Their meeting is not scheduled till after this meeting, and we don't have a second meeting this month, so this is contingent. Our approval will have to go through the Traffic Authority as well, have to say yes.
Why a 24-hour slot?
Oh, wait, is that a first?
Sorry. Sorry, why a 24-hour slot?
Cleanup.
Yeah, speaking of Mr. Nahom, it was the cleanup part of it.
Sorry, he couldn't be here tonight to answer the questions, but usually, there's a lot, you know how that is, there's a lot to clean up.
Thank you.
Any discussion? More? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Item number nine, for Public Works, move to accept a donation of 23 pallets of mulch from New Milford Farms on Boardman Road to the Department of Public Works.
Any discussion? We have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And we will send, we will send a letter to them thanking them for their generous donation.
Item 10, under the mayor's office, motion to approve the re-execution of the lease between the Town of New Milford and Curtis Eck, doing business as Greystone Farm, for a lease of agricultural property.
Second.
Thank you. So basically, Mr. Elk has been Farm X, sorry, has been film, has been farming up by the silo for how many years now, Randy?
10.
For 10 years? And he would like to continue to do that. I walked the property with Mr. Elk, and one of the things is we had some drainage issues that were going on that went into our roadway and then also into the neighbor's property. Mr. Elk has since fixed those, put in additional drainage, put in some riprap. So within the contingent of this lease is, if there is any issues with drainage, Mr. Elk would fix those at his cost, so I bring back the lease to be renewed. Any discussion?
So it looks like the lease actually expired because the term is October 1, 2018 to 2029?
I can speak to that.
Yep, Randy.
The reason it's not October 1, 2018 is because of termination of the exercise of the option was made at that time.
Gotcha.
So the reality is, we simply added that date as a commencement date, because it's going to end at the same time, August 29, 2009, or 21st, 2029. Recall that this is an option to renew. It's not a new lease. It's an option. That's why you don't need town meeting approval.
Right, thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Item 11, under Economic Development, has been taken off the agenda till a future time, and before we end our meeting, I just want everyone to know that the next regular meeting of the town council is not in three days. It is September 9. It says August 12, but it's really September 9. There is no second meeting in August.
And before we adjourn, Karen is here, Economic Development Director.
Oh, sorry.
Is there anything concerning green spaces you'd like to say or... Gotcha. Perfect. And unfortunately, Mr. Freeman was, I believe he was ill, so that's why he asked that we postpone it to another meeting, so we wish him well and good health.
And a motion to adjourn, Mr. Mayor.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Thank you, everyone.